Order at 7:01 PM. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McCulkey.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
And now approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the agenda with the following changes. Okay, first, I move that we pull the zoning ordinance amendments from the agenda and table those to a later date for additional discussion amongst the city council members. Additionally, I would move that we-
I'm sorry, could you identify which ones? Seven D and seven E, is there another one?
Seven-
F?
Seven F.
F. Seven F.
Okay.
I move that we pull item seven E, adoption of an ordinance 1296 to extend keeping of chickens permit to two years from the agenda and table it to a later date to allow for some clarification. It looks like there might be a drafting error in the draft of the ordinance that's on the agenda that doesn't match up with our current city code. So, Pro Tim McCulkey, and I would like to take a look at that further. And then additionally, we would like to move item seven D to the regular agenda to allow for discussion on, you know, what this lead service line ordinance change means for residents.
Support, wait one minute.
Sorry.
One minute, there's more.
And seven F, is that being- Is that being postponed or just moved to the regular agenda?
Postponed. Hold from the agenda.
Okay, for a later date.
That we have a new date.
And then the date that the flag flying-
Seven C.
In the description for item seven C, the flag for Juneteenth will be raised on June 16th and fly through June 26th. And I believe there is a typo in the description. So, all of those amendments.
Sure, yeah, second.
Johnson.
Yes.
McCulkey.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. And we have a few presentations tonight. The first one being Martin Road Proposed Facility Design with our Parks and Rec Director, Lorena Wheeler.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well. All right, so, yes, today I'll be discussing the final site design for the Martin Road Park Support Facility that we've been working on for the last four years. Well, we've been working on a building in the park for the last four years, but this is what we have based on some of the needs that were addressed recently to support our park operations and our programs within the park. We, as you, if those are familiar with Martin Road Park, we have a lot of new amenities that's gone into the park within the last few years with the most recent amenities being the pickleball court, the full-court splash pad, and additional pavilion, and full-court basketball court and the splash pad, I'm sorry about that. And with those additional amenities in the park brings more people, which is what we always want in our parks. That's what we build them for and develop them for. And so, we need additional restrooms and to help service our community. So, we saw that need a while back, especially for our splash pads, so we can accommodate the amount of users that our splash pad could hold. However, due to permitting requirements, we weren't able to have 288 people on our splash pad at one time because we didn't have enough restrooms to support that many people. So, this project, also one of the main reasons is so we can accommodate more users on our splash pad. From identifying that need in the park, we sought out grant funding for it where we raised over $2.1 million. And with that grant funding, our project's goal was limited to, or started at a restroom and concession building that also consists of equipment storage and staff space. We have engaged the community since 2022 where we actually put the master plan, put the- Put the project in our master plan and got a lot of community feedback. I'm sorry, is this going in and out?
It always goes in and out.
Okay, all right. Where we engaged the community as part of our five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan in 2022. We also discussed it at several of our meetings, Parks and Recreation Commission meetings that is held once a month. Those are public meetings. In addition, we had four community design meetings last year that was led by the city as well as our architect who helped design the facility, Newman Smith. Some of those key themes that came from the public was they wanted to prioritize function over size. So, it wasn't necessarily how big the building was. It was more so does it serve our needs for our parks and our residents who visit the parks. They also wanted accessible public restrooms, maintain green space in the park aesthetics. We have a lot of mature trees at Martin Road Park and we wanted to make sure we kept them there and not have to disturb them or remove any trees based on this development. And lastly, another key theme was to have covered seating areas, especially during the summertime. So, as I mentioned earlier, we secured a lot of grant funding to make this project happen. Some of those sources included federal funding from a community project funding grant, which is being administered through HUD in an amount of $704,000. We also were awarded a Michigan Community Enhancement Grant in an amount of $500,000 and a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Spark Grant for facilities in an amount of $951,000, totaling our grant funding for $2.156 million, which is exactly what we're estimating our project to be. So, we raised enough funding to cover the grant based on the estimates we receive, and cover the project based on the estimates we received without having to use any general funding at this time. So, now to the fun stuff. What did we come up with? So, what you see here is a master site plan that shows the orientation of everything. So, in the top left of this diagram here, you see the Recreation Support Building. That's where the building is going to be built right off of the main pathway across from the splash pad and adjacent to the new pickleball courts. And in this location, we do not have to remove any trees like I mentioned earlier. Everything that's highlighted here in this area is part of the project plan. Some things that we plan to do in addition to this, if funding allows, would include adding an additional path here, renovating and putting in a new pavilion. And also, in the future, we want to expand the playground area. So, and I'm going to go in detail of actually the floor plan of this building, but is there several entryways into, well, there's one main entryway into the building, which you see here. There's a few accessible access points into the building. We also have a covered patio in this area as well. And the building is accessible from the parking lot off of Orchard. If I can get my ear, oh, there we go. Parking lot off of Orchard as well as on Orchard and all the way if you park in the Curbin Club parking lot as well. There were some restrictions that we had to, as far as placement of this building. If you see right next to the building, there's a double line there that says sanitary line. We cannot build on top of that sanitary line. So, we had to make sure we stayed out of the way of that just in case there was any construction that needs to be done on the line later. They would have to bust up the building or whatever's on top of it to access it. So, here's our floor plan. As I mentioned, to the right, we have a covered patio where we put some picnic tables. I'm going to start from the right and move to the left. The bottom right is a rental and storage area where we plan to lend equipment, park equipment out, whether it's basketballs, footballs, soccer balls, sleds, or what have you to continue to keep people engaged in the park and just make it more convenient for everybody to come out and play with us. To the left of that is the mechanical room and above that is the concession stand. In that top right corner of the concession stand, there's windows on both sides where we'll be able to see out as well as service our customers. To the left, you'll see the gray area, which is just the main hallway for people to access the restrooms. We have two men's, a men's restroom and a women's restroom adjacent to each other, the bottom part of that area. And on the top part, we have a family restroom. And to the left of that in blue as well is the janitor's closet. Each restroom does consist of like a bench where people can go in and change clothes if necessary if they're using a splash pad or any of our other amenities in the park. And then to the left, where you see the top left where it's orange's color, that would be the operating or staff office where we can view the park, be able to manage programs as well as service the public out of. And directly below that is our splash pad storage where we can store all of our chemicals and any other park needs that DBW or our department needs to operate the park. And then right outside of that, you will see a screen and that's where the trash cans will be located and recycling bins. And here's the building design from the outside. Again, I mentioned the concessions. So, right now, you're looking at the splash pad view. The main door is right in the middle and then you can see the concession right in that corner as well as the patio. This is the view from the northwest side and closer to like the pickleball court area. And the windows that you're seeing at this corner would be the office windows that I pointed out earlier. And behind that is the splash pad storage room. One of the things a lot of our community said they wanted were, was a mural on the building. So, we do have the capacity to install a mural and this is just, this isn't the mural that would be there, but just showing the possibilities and where it could be. So, we have two other views here. One is from on the left side, like the southwest view from the pickleball court or Orchard Street. And on the right would be from the playground or the pavilion. And just to orient you, this again is Martin Road Park. This is an older view, so it doesn't show the new updates that we just had opened this spring. But I just wanted to show you, the current restroom building is here in the middle off the main path in green. And then to the right of that, right in front of the pavilion is the old building, the old storage building that's out of order. Both of those will be demolished and that's where we will be putting in the new facility here. So, what are our next steps? So, today, we wanted to present the final design to council and to the public and hear any comments or have a discussion about the design before we finalize the construction drawings and put out a RFP. We plan on putting out that request for proposal this summer. As part of that, we have to get MDNR approval before we bid it out. And then we plan to also finalize our contractor selection this summer as well. Moving into the fall, we'll kick off the project and begin site prep and demo work after Labor Day so we can conclude at least our splash pad season. And then we plan to start construction, which will go through this fall all the way to early summer. If anyone has any questions about the design, the park, or anything we discuss here, you can feel free to contact myself. This is my direct extension or our email, our general email to our department. I'm going to thank you and I'm going to open it up and see if you guys have any questions.
Head up to council. Good work.
I think it looks nice. I'm thrilled we don't have to pay for it. I'm thrilled that, you know, we were able to get enough grants to cover this and, you know, that's huge. Thank you for that hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
And to your Parks and Rec, the committee, because I'm sure they had a lot of input as far as talking about this.
Yeah, they were very helpful.
Anything else from council about?
All right, so the next thing that you guys will see from us is when we select the contractor after we bid, spec this out and bid it for approval. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lorena.
Our next presentation is Presentation Southeast Oakland County Safety Plan Presentation by Tool Design and Assistant City Manager James Crzan. He's presenting along with guests.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. So, yeah, as you guys have been aware for the last, wow, year and a half or so, we've been working on a safety action plan with our neighbors in southeast Oakland County. Tonight, we've got Kristen Saunders here and Drew Parker over there from Tool Design who are going to give a quick presentation on where that's led and what's happening next. So, I'm going to get the slideshow up and kick it right over to Kristen.
Hi, I'm Kristen Saunders. I'm with Tool Design. I haven't presented to you yet, but I do know you've been seeing our project throughout its development. So, I'm excited to be here today. So, we've, yeah, we've been working on the safety action plan for southeast Oakland County for about the last 18 months. And here, these are the kind of components. So, we, we had all the communities in the study area pass a resolution adopting Vision Zero, including this body. We've gone through a long planning process, including a crash analysis, public outreach, a policy and process inventory and analysis, as well as picking projects and sort of prioritizing projects. So, we're here to talk a little bit more about that today. Just to give you the study area, I hope you guys have all seen this, but just, this is a really, it's not super common for seven communities to get together and apply for a grant and go through a planning process together. I think it's really to be like, it's a really big feat and I, I think it's really great that you guys have chosen to take this on. So, yeah, so these are the seven communities that got together and got the planning grant and now Ferndale, as the lead applicant, is moving into an implementation grant process. So, just a little bit of some of the highlights. So, yeah, we've been working on it for quite a while. We analyzed crashes, the crash window from 2018 to 2023. We've had five steering committee meetings over this time, three public meetings, open houses, some pop-up events, and seven resolutions committing Division Zero by, oh, that should say, not by 2024, but by 2045. So, just to give you, we're going to share the plan with you after this meeting, but to give you kind of just a visual of what it looks like, you can see, let's see if I can work this pointer. You can see kind of that second image with the circles, looking at the different crash types within the study area. We're sharing some more statistics about crash trends across the study area. We're sharing our communications plan from the outreach process. And then the more boring but more exciting to me, table all the way on the right is actually the actions and sort of making assignments. So, making sure that when we leave this plan with you, that you know what to do and that we're, keep it moving along. So, some of the, just high level, some of the characteristics that we have focused on and that we've noticed in your community and that we've heard from residents is that you, you have a lot of really quiet, calm, nice residential streets, but they're really bisected by these very, very busy streets that are hard to cross. And they, over time, have become kind of some social barriers, definitely a mental barrier like crossing Woodward Avenue or some of these bigger streets. But, so we've been looking for ways in this plan to kind of break down those barriers. We also see this in the crash data. So, most of your crashes are on, 80% of your crash, fatal and serious crashes are on streets that are over 35 mile an hour, even though those are only 24% of the streets. 70% of those crashes are on wide streets with four or more lanes. And 27% of all the fatal and serious injury crashes in the study area are on eight mile. So, some other just local characteristics that we've been focusing on in the plan. The most common contributing factors are alcohol, drug use, and speeding to crashes. So, those are part of the crash report. And then for vulnerable road users, you see some of those same items, alcohol use, red light running, and careless driving. And what that really, you know, some of the things that this says to us is that I think in all safety action plans, we need to look at this holistically, look at the, you know, the roadway design, but also kind of some of those actions that are leading to dangerous situations. So, we have crafted a really holistic approach that includes communication, includes roadway design, includes quick fixes, as well as those kind of longer-term fixes that we need. One thing that I think is always very useful in a planning process like this, but especially with so many communities, is just a policy inventory. So, you know, thinking, thinking ahead and especially since this is a governing body, just towards what types of policies you could be considering or keeping up to date that do have an impact on the safety of our streets. So, this is, you know, the complete streets policy, the Vision Zero resolution, equity and project prioritization and project selection, whether you have a crosswalk policy for where and when they are installed, access management, looking at driveways, and then whether the community has an established mobility network, like a bike plan or transit plan, and then road diet and turn-on-red policy. So, whether you have kind of policy documents governing how you make those decisions. So, hopefully, you've seen this high injury network in the past, but these are the streets where most of your fatal and serious injury crashes are occurring today. And I'm going to move through these a little bit quickly, but you can see, you know, a lot of those four-lane faster-moving streets really, they are your higher injury crashes. So, from this map, we know you can't work on all of these projects at the same time. This is quite a lot of projects and quite a lot of mileage. So, from this map, we also looked at prioritizing projects based on roadway characteristics. So, you know, digging into those crash data, that crash data again, and really looking at the projects that are the most dangerous. Land use, so streets that provide access to destinations, especially community destinations, grocery stores, parks, schools, things like that. And then also equity, so projects that are, connect to Justice 40 areas or areas of persistent poverty. So, this, we went through a couple different projects. We've had three grant workshops with our, with our client team, which is representatives from those seven communities. And we've, so we've had kind of three versions of this. This is the third version. It's still a draft where everyone's reviewing it right now, but it's getting pretty solid. So, we have four different project types. Sorry, three different project types shown on this map. Three different project types, a systemic safety corridor, substantial reconstruction, those are, systemic safety is the one in the yellow, substantial reconstruction are the ones in the pink, and then a corridor study are the ones in the blue. And then the fourth project type is an evaluation. So, the systemic safety corridors are those corridors that are a little bit more quick build, like an installation more like Livernoy Avenue looks like today with paint and ballards. The substantial reconstruction projects are a little more like Livernoy in Detroit or like Woodward, or parts of Woodward Avenue in Pleasant Ridge that are moving curb lines, doing concrete work. The corridor studies on eight mile and 14 mile are projects that we didn't think you could achieve kind of the safety outcomes that you want with a quick build. We've heard from your community that paint and ballards don't really work on those really, really wide roadways with many lanes. They just get destroyed. So, those corridor studies are committing to a longer process, a process that we think is necessary. Specifically, eight mile, you know, a lot of the crashes in the study area are on eight mile. It's also multi-jurisdictional. And, you know, it's owned by MDOT. Half of it's in southeast Oakland County, half of it's in Detroit. So, we think that this is the time to really take it on and develop a long-term vision plan. So, that's what that project is. And then the evaluation of three previously built projects are just a commitment to learning from the great work you've already been doing. So, doing an evaluation of John R., which had installed bike lanes and pedestrian refuge islands and a road diet, evaluating Woodward Avenue and evaluating 11 mile, which is about to be under construction in June. So, just an image of kind of the difference between the, like, longer-term reconstruction projects and systemic safety with the paint and ballards I was mentioning. So, the draft project summary. So, we are working towards, the last part of our contract is actually preparing a safety, Safe Streets for All grant application for you. And Ferndale has agreed to be the lead applicant for the seven communities. But this would be another collaborative project and collaborative grant application. So, we're, some of the, so you can kind of see the breakdown of the seven systemic safety corridors, which are a little bit more affordable, the substantial reconstruction, which of course you're going to be spending more money on those streets, and then the long-term corridor studies and the evaluation projects. That's totaling, you know, less than $13 million, but the grant itself is broken into implementation funds and planning funds. And so, it's actually, if you look down at the note on the bottom, the $11,937,000 for implementation funds and are kind of the, one of the numbers that USDOT is tracking. Tracked a little bit separately. So, just breaking it down by, you can kind of see the different streets. We have broken it down by community as well, that's on the next slide. But you can kind of see the breakdown a little bit. I'll just leave you at that for a sec if you want to read it. And then breaking it down by community, it is 80% federal, 20% local match. So, you can see everyone's cost share here. Ferndale has, does have quite a long, more mileage than the other communities and Livernoy is one of the projects, which is kind of a longer substantial reconstruction corridor as well. Looking at schedule, and I can come back to any of these slides, but looking at the schedule, you can see the corridor studies on this project. So, these are going to be kind of really long-term vision plan projects. The systemic safety corridors would go right into design as soon as you receive the grant. And the substantial reconstruction would have, you know, more years of design, like two miles, two years. We've also included another year of design for nine mile, which is a little more complicated. And that is, that's it. I know that was a lot of information. Are there any slides you'd like me to go back to?
I'd open it up to council.
So, yeah, about eight or 10 slides back, you had a graph that showed, you go in a little, yep, there. The first column, complete streets. Ferndale adopted a complete streets ordinance in 2010. So, maybe it was so far back that you didn't realize that we had it in place?
Oh, I, I feel like, I will fix that. I knew that, yeah.
Yep. On the turn-on-red policy, I don't think we have anything correct, Chief. Not that I'm aware of.
And no, no turn-on-red can be a big part of Vision Zero and working towards safer intersections. So, a turn-on-red policy would just help you make those decisions a little bit quicker by outlining when and where it's appropriate in your community.
Sure.
So.
And then the other, only other thing is, and I think this may be directed to you, Colleen, the graph that showed what our percentage was, it was 80%, 20% that we would have to pay. Can our 20% be paid through Act 51?
Yes.
Okay. So, we could essentially not spend any general fund money on any of this.
Theoretically, yes. And under Act 51, we have an obligation to actually invest part of those dollars into non-motorized transportation.
Yep. Okay. That's all I have. Thanks. Thanks.
And you did say that we'll receive a copy of this after? Thank you.
And the full, the full plan is coming to you as well.
There's no action tonight, other than waiting to receive the plan and...
Yeah. If, I just wanted to add, so I, I think this has been a great project all along. I know that Kyle, he's no longer with us, but he was heading it up for quite some time, and he was being very active. So I kind of miss having him being as active as he, as he was, not being here to see this continue through, so, but thank you.
Send it to him, too. But, yeah, yeah, we, it's been great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say thank you to Kristin and Drew and the team at Tool. They've done a really good job of coordinating this project, keeping seven different communities on track, on schedule, and, and also dealing with, there's been a lot of turnover, you know, in these seven communities over the last year and a half. So they've done a really good job. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Third presentation, the pay-by-zone transition. Is going to allow us a little bit of free parking for a little bit, huh?
One week.
One week? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Council, Council Mayor Leaks May, council members, city manager, thank you for allowing me to present today. This is a project that we've been working on for over a year. We've had several setbacks for various reasons, but we're ready to start this transition. And I'm here to give you an update on scheduling and, and give you, some, some of the council members, I don't think were here when we started talking about this, so I'm going to give a little bit of background on this. And I do want to say, City Comms, DPW, city staff, James, both Jameses have helped a lot, help us get, put this together and get it to the point that we're at right now. So this is, the last time I talked about this, I talked about it in terms of calling it pay-by-plate, a transition from pay-by-space to pay-by-plate. We changed the, the communication on this to pay-by-zone, hoping that it will be more easily digestible by the public, calling it zone instead of plate. And let me go to the next slide. So here you can see, this is an outline of our parking system. Woodward is the double lines going down the middle, and then those are, the boxes represent all of our parking areas. Our parking areas also, areas are also along Woodward, Nine Mile, East and West Troy, and West Saratoga, Vester, some other side streets, Whittington as well. And this system change is going to affect the entire parking ecosystem. What we, what we're planning to do, or what's in progress right now, is we are transitioning the payment system from currently pay-by-space to pay-by-zone. Similar, actually, it's a replica of what you've seen in some other cities. Downtown Detroit, if you've ever parked down there, has this same system that we're transitioning to. And the question some people, you know, ask, I've had some calls, why, why are we doing this? There's a couple of reasons. The major reason why we're making this transition is it's a more efficient way for us to manage our parking. We have a vehicle that can read license plates, and our, our, right now, our ticket riders, our enforcement staff don't use the LPR for timed parking right now. It's all used for residential. We will integrate that into our paid parking system hereafter we make this transition. Because LPR, the, the automated process of reading license plates to enforce parking doesn't work in a pay-by-space environment. Slide, oh, and let me go back to, let me go back. So this, I do want to say that east of Woodward, in addition to us transitioning the pay-by-zone, east of Woodward, we will also be installing new parking kiosks during this time. Our kiosks, most of them were purchased in 2014, 2015. They have lived well beyond their lifespan. So we're in the process of this year, replacing most of the kiosks on the east side of Woodward. And then in July, we have funding to purchase additional kiosks. We'll be replacing additional kiosks in July, but the kiosk replacement isn't necessarily tied to this project of transitioning to pay-by, pay-by-zone. And the current, the current system right now, I think everybody understands what that is. I won't spend any time on that. So this, the diagram or the graphic that you see right here is a, one of the communications or one of the signs that we're going to have out on the sidewalks, telling people about the coming changes. This is one version, we probably have about, I think we have about four of them. They, our word is slightly different, but the ideal is to communicate to people about these changes. We're also communicating to people about the changes via the website, our city website. Riley's helped us update the city website along with the DDA. Did I mention the DDA we collaborated with? I'm sorry. The DDA has been very involved in this as well, I want to say that. But we've updated the website, we are communicating with customers via the app and via, yeah, the app, and we also are, are communicating with the customers via these Windmaster signs that we're putting out on the street starting tomorrow. So starting tomorrow, you'll start seeing these. There's also a social media component to this that the DDA and comms are working on or that have developed to go out and be communicating with people during this, during this week, during this upcoming week, and after the week is over as well. So this is just an example of how the system works, and that's a, a version of this sign. This is one of the actual signs that are being posted in our surface lots, on the street, wherever we have paid parking. So it's, it's what you see on the screen, basically. And each block face in most areas will have a unique code, a unique zone that parkers will enter along with their license plate to execute a parking session. And, you know, one of the, one of the key things that I wanted to point out as well is the app doesn't change. So in the app, parkers will get a notification that they're going to need to load their license plate into the app itself. And once they do that one time, they don't have to do it anymore to use the system. They just have to enter the zone where they park. But the Park Ferndale app doesn't change. All current users will be able to continue to use the app. And I also want to mention that, you know, we are approaching, are, we are above 70% app utilization in our system, which allows us to reduce the amount of hardware that we have on the street. Allows us to reduce the number of kiosks that we have on the street, which is a cost savings. To, it's a different thing, I mean, it's not really tied to this transition itself, but it is something that I wanted to mention. And here we have a, that's a different version of the informational sign. I outlined, this is roughly, or this is generally the implementation plan. So there's already been communications that's gone out on the transition itself, social media, comms, a parking payment system message on the app, and we have a message on the kiosks themselves. So people who try to, if someone tries to pay right now, they're going to get a message that says parking is free for this week. There, there has been one hiccup that we're fixing, people with iPhones right now, that message isn't coming across yet. I have a help ticket in with our service provider to get that fixed. I expect that to be fixed tomorrow. But we have other methods of communicating with people that they don't have to pay during this week of transition. And then after next week, or when next week hits, there will still be other types of communication. I don't have that list of things that Riley and Summer are planning to put out, but they have a long list of things that I didn't add here, but there's additional communications that are going out. So I didn't want to take up too much of your time, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions from council regarding the pay-by-zone transition? I just, I wanted to say that I think that this is, this is similar to what they have in Lansing, isn't that correct? It's like from the block-to-block kind of zone?
Most, most metropolitan areas where you have this type of density are transitioning away from pay-by-space to this type of zone. Now, I'm not familiar with Lansing, but I know if they are using zone parking, it's going to look very similar.
Questions, comments? Boodles for a job well done?
Actually, you know what? I'm sorry, I do have a question. So a lot of the zones numbers are probably going to be like a sequence, like, you know, 4,001 to 4,020, or whatever zones we have.
Yeah.
If I park in a zone and pay for three hours of parking, but I put in the wrong zone, am I still going to get ticketed?
No, you, you should not get a ticket. We got, we have the system set up, so the enforcement officer will see that it's a different zone, because it's plate-oriented. So it's going to see that, okay, Councilman Pollock parked in Zone 4108, and he's at 4109, we, you know, we attribute it to, we, so we won't write a ticket for that, and we also want to promote the park-once scenario, so, you know, people don't feel like they have to move around if they park. You could park there, and then you could go somewhere else within your two hours that you pay. So the answer is no to that question.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
I do have a question regarding, back to Lansing again, there's a three-hour maximum. Where, are we going to have maximums on our?
We, we have maximum, right now, we have maximum, maximums on-street.
On-street.
On-street. In the lots, we do not have maximums. In the lots, someone can park for as long as they would like. I think one of the evolutions of our parking system, which I'll, you know, I'll bring back a recommendation at a future time, is to allow someone to park for longer than the two-hour max that's in place now, but they just would need to pay a higher rate per hour and have an escalating fee. So if, for instance, your two-hour meeting went over, you wouldn't necessarily get a ticket if you didn't move your car, if you, you know, went into the system and purchased an additional hour, two hours, but it would be at a higher fee. But that's, that's a program change.
Okay.
That we can implement after we get this implemented.
I think that's something that would be of value, because it's...
Yeah. People, you know, lunches run over, dinner run over, yeah, I, I understand.
Air appointments.
Air appointment.
Nail appointments.
Any other questions?
I know this has been a hard, a lot of hard work, so, you know, thank you to, to you and to your team.
Thank you.
It's a big undertaking.
And, and I would like to thank city staff and the DDA, too, because they've been very instrumental.
And thank everyone for, you know, consulting with the Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission on all of the signage. So I know Allen and the rest of the members of the commission really appreciated having the opportunity to weigh in and make sure these signs are designed in a way that is visually accessible, accessible to folks who are, you know, neuro-atypical, and, you know, they really appreciated the, the care and the thought that went into designing the signage and the material and, and the information around sort of all levels of accessibility. So, you know, on their behalf and on my own behalf, thank you. It's really huge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
All right. We are now at the portion of the agenda where we have call to audience. I invite anyone in the audience to come speak at the podium for anything on or off the agenda. For three minutes, I, I ask that you state your name and address, and I'm opening up call to audience at 7:47.
Good evening, Mayor Leaks May, council, hi neighbors. Eddie Sabatini, 1003 Pearson. I'm here tonight on behalf of a growing coalition of Ferndale residents, local businesses, and environmental organizations, united by a shared goal, to secure a public, community-centered future for the Coolack property at 1201 Livernoy. Over the past several months, we've been in, in direct, ongoing conversation with Ferndale's Board of Education. We understand the district is exploring potential land swap or sale of the property to the city. We believe this represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, if handled openly and collaboratively, to shape a shared vision for this land that reflects our community's values. I understand the complexity of this issue. I'm not here with demands, I'm here with a commitment. I know this will take time, and I'm in it for the long haul. We're building something that will outlast any single budget cycle or council term. That's the point. Let me make this very clear. We're not here to promote a single outcome. We do not expect this process to happen overnight. We are realistic about the long road ahead for this project. We are here to advocate for a community-led process that prioritizes public use, ecological preservation, and equitable access to green space. Our aim is to ensure that any future use of this site reflects the needs of the residents. To that end, I accept an invitation, I accepted an invitation to serve on the Ferndale Schools' Facilities Committee. I see this as an opportunity to ensure the community has a voice at the table, regardless of who ultimately owns the land. And we're proud to share that the Detroit Bird Alliance has now formally joined our coalition. Their support underscores, underscores the ecological significance for this site, including its potential use as migratory bird habitat and its role as a local environmental resource. This is not just about buildings, it's about stewardship, it's about thinking long-term together. We fully understand that the city faces real fiscal and infrastructural challenges, but we believe this is about more than money and maintenance. It's about protecting public land in a part of Ferndale where inclusive, walkable green space is already scarce. We respectfully ask the city leadership to publicly disclose a timeline, details of any negotiations with the school district while in advance, so residents have time to understand, engage, and respond. Host a dedicated public forum, not just a council meeting, to gather meaningful community input on the future of the property. Commit to protecting, expanding green space on the site, ensuring it remains publicly accessible for generations to come. This is a pivotal moment for Ferndale. With vision, intention, and true collaboration, we can turn a neglected space into a model of civic engagement, environmental leadership, and community pride. We are here, and we are paying attention. Thank you for your time and your service to our city.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council, all attendees and neighbors. I'm here as the co-chair of the Ferndale Arts and Unification Commission. My name is Suzanne Janik. We have, we are proud to pronounce that we are holding the first Pollinator Parade Saturday, June 21st, at the Ferndale Area District Library. We have, it's, we have several groups coming to assist us, including Detroit Hives, the Detroit Bird Allowance, which was, Alliance, which was previously mentioned. which was, Alliance, which was previously mentioned, MSU Extension, Oakland County, the Ferndale Garden Club, as well as the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. It starts Saturday, June 21st, at 1 o'clock at the library. We will have exhibitions, we will have some crafts, we will have giveaways. And the parade begins at 2:30, where we will walk through parts of Ferndale and learn about pollinators that help us, help our environment. I'm also going to speak that the beautification nominations are open and available on our webpage, and they close June 17th for the June awards. That's it.
Mayor, Suzanne, if I, if I may, with these organizations coming to the event, are they gonna be tabling, or like doing any other types of activities? Like, what does that look like?
They will be tabling, they will be there for questions, they will be there as pollinator experts. They will also have some giveaways, some crafts, and things for the kids and for adults. And we consider it to be an all ages event. So, we encourage you to dress or represent your favorite pollinator or your favorite flower to take part in the parade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chess. President of the Ferndale Community Concert Band, and I'm here to let you know that we're gonna be soon playing two concerts in June. The first one is this Wednesday on Belle Isle. The Music on Belle Isle Group is hosting us, so we'll be playing at Sunset Point, beginning at 7 o'clock, from 7 to 8, weather permitting. The last two years, we've been stormed out. So, this year, it's looking kind of good. Our next concert is June 22nd at the Ferndale High School, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday. And then, that's the closing of our season. We're excited about our next season coming up. We hope to be performing in the Ford Dearborn Performing Arts Center in March, collaborating with the Farmington Community Band, where Damien Crutcher is their band director. And we're in conversation right now with the Chicago North Shore Community Band, and we hope to be doing a collaborative concert near where the Bean is, in Millennial Park. Because of North Shore, we were able to establish the Ferndale Community Concert Band. When Tim and I were appointed to do this task, we reached out to them. They write, they wrote a manual on how to do this, and that was our guideline and our outline to do what we did and to become as successful as what we have. So, we're in conversation with them now. So, next summer, hopefully, we'll be in Millennial Park. We hope to take the train there, and you can be on our music train and come and enjoy. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, Dave Cottrell from 1610 Bowfield. I, well, I, this is comments about the Southeast Oakland Safety Action Plan. I did attend a forum when, that forum when there was unpleasant ridge, and it's just some of the things just don't fit me well. It's like, one, I really questioned, do we have quiet residential streets? We have a lot of cut-through streets with people avoiding Nine Mile. And, and, yeah, I don't drive on Woodward as much, because it's too congested. It's Pinecrest is a lot easier to take from where I live. And of course, Camborne gets a lot of street traffic that Nine Mile does, used to. And west of Pinecrest, I never, I never drive on, I don't drive on Nine Mile very often more, anymore. It's like Oak Park Boulevard is much quicker and smoother. And so, I think you get a lot of diversion of traffic from the, the major roads when you do these road diets. And when they did have the Woodward Avenue Road Diet, I did, there was an MDOT kind of conference on Zoom, and I asked the, the person directly, you know, did you consider diversion of traffic of Woodward onto the residential streets? And no, that wasn't part of the study. So, I just really questioned, you know, this, is there really be a safety plan or just like diverting traffic all over the place, which has happened in Ferndale? So, thank you.
Thank you. Your takers for call to audience? Okay. I'm closing call to audience at 7:55. And moving on to the consent agenda. Save 7A, approval of the May 27th, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the resolution to display the Juneteenth flag outside of Ferndale City Hall, starting on June 16. 7C, approval of resolution to recognize June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. 7D, approval of the mutual aid agreement with the Southeastern Oakland County Public Works Association member communities. 7E, approval of the special event permit for the Harvest Walk on Livernoy on September 27th, 2025. 7F, approval of the special event permit for Heroes and Dreams, once a month from June to October 2025. 7G, approval of basketball court installation at Wilson Park by Ajax Paving Industrial through the local paving program in the amount of $78,143.01. 7H, approval of the payment for renewal dues to the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $10,449. 7I, approval, excuse me, appointment of representatives and alternate to Sacra Board of Trustees. 7J, approval of the listed appointments and reappointments to the city boards and commissions. 7K, adoption of resolution to schedule a public hearing to consider action to vacate the alley between Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street, adjacent to lots 28 through 37, for the July 14th, 2025 city council meeting. 7L, approval to purchase a 2025 Ford E Transit cargo van from Gornow Ford in the amount of $56,100. 7M, approval of the software renewal with GOV OS for seamless docks in the amount of $9,243.15. 7N, approval of payment to Nova Consultants for the, for solar photovoltaic system maintenance in the amount of $9,945. 7O, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the finance director and subject to review by the council finance committee. And 7P, approval of summer 2025 special assessments.
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes. We are now on to the regular agenda. Item 8A, approval as to form of a three-party agreement for staff to administer the Oakland Livingston Human Services Agency Senior, Senior Chore Grant. Sorry, can't talk tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. As the mayor introduced, this is an agreement. It's intended to be a three-party agreement between the city, the selected contractor, and the qualified resident for the OLSA grant. If council recalls, we did receive a $380,000 OLSA grant for seniors. We've used some of that money for grass cutting and snow removal, but we do have a portion that we're using to improve people's homes, senior chores. The application deadline for round one was April 28th. I think we've received in that round 18 applications for help. And so, now, the agreement's next, and then we can start getting contractors out to help seniors with their senior chores.
Okay. All right. Have we, have we received applications for round two yet?
Round two just got sent to me yesterday by OLSA. So, I have not looked at it, but Alessandra, I think, said there was about 20 in round two.
Okay.
Oh, good.
All right, open up to council for discussion regarding the home chore service grant.
I only have a question about, so if, you know, we have the 18 from round one, Alessandra thinks we've got a little over 20 in round two. Do we think that between those two rounds, that's still gonna, is that gonna, do we think that's gonna program out all of the funds? Or do we think we're gonna have to do like a round three?
Well, yeah, so we, we currently have round three out there. We've told people to continue to apply.
So, we've told people to apply, okay.
But we've told them that it's looking like it might be running out. So, it just depends if there's a lot of $5,000 grants or $2,500 grants, but I think most requests are, are in the 5,000 range.
I mean, how, for how long can people still get an application in for round three?
We're still, we're still taking them in. We don't have a date on that one yet. We're just telling people to apply. Once we get into round one, a little bit more, then I'll, I think I'll have an idea of round two and round three. But we would tell anybody, just, it takes a couple of minutes to apply, just apply, and then go on the waitlist.
Okay.
So, I know conversations have been had regarding the, I guess, the 18 applications for round one. Do we have an idea what's, how many have been approved so far? Or, are you looking for the?
Yes, the committee met, we met a couple weeks ago, and everybody recommended we move everybody forward. So, we would anticipate we're gonna be able to help everyone in the round one. But we haven't went through the actual.
But I do recall that there were some things that kind of had to be vetted a little more. But ultimately, we think that we can help all of those 18 with something.
Yeah, the only thing we were, I think OLSA was a little reluctant or doesn't really support is window replacement. Unless a window is broken, and then that would qualify.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, and thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Through the chair, are we planning on doing another push on social media so that people are aware of this?
We can talk, Riley and I can talk about that. I think we have to jump into round one and get contractors out there and have a feel for it. But, I don't think there's a problem with advertising a little bit more.
And are people still visiting, it looks like it was a Bitly link? Bitly forward slash home chore grant program? Or is there a better link for that?
Sure.
That was initially intended for the newsletter and the, and social media, just to shorten it up a bit, but that one still does go to our article. It's just not on the homepage anymore, but I can put it back up there if needed.
Any other questions?
Oh, this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of people.
All right. There's a motion on that.
Yep.
Oh, we do, that's right. Okay, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as to form a three-party agreement for staff to administer the Oakland Livingston Human Services Senior Chore Grant with allowance for the city manager to amend as necessary.
Support?
Kelly?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Now, we're going on to what is now item 8B. And that is, which was pulled from the consent agenda, adoption of ordinance 1295 to require participation in lead line service replacement program or self-replacement of lead service lines.
Can kind of cover that topic broadly for you? And if we have specific questions, invite Director Jamison up.
All right.
So, this ordinance change allows the city to continue its current practice of verifying whether lead service lines exist, maintain its compliance with state and federal statutes, but also provide an alternative for homeowners who do not want to grant consent to the city to change out their lead service line. We do occasionally run into instances where, because that is private property, individuals do not want to grant the authority to the city to perform that work. Regardless, the work still needs to be performed. All lead service lines need to be replaced within the city over a certain period of time. The city is doing its part now on those verifications and replacements. So, this ordinance gives, again, that second avenue for homeowners. If they choose to opt out of the city's lead service line replacement program, they instead can self-perform the work.
Through the chair, does that mean that they will pay in full? Or will they get a stipend based on what the city would pay?
They would be paying for it themselves if they perform, self-perform the work.
And I think it, it's important to clarify, you know, the thing about this ordinance is it mandates the replacement, so all residents are mandated to do this. But, the, the clock stops for you if you're enrolled in our lead line replacement program. So, the intent is to get folks into the lead line replacement program. If folks are truly not wanting to have the city of Ferndale do the lead line replacement, they are still legally obligated to do so. That obligation does not go away. It just means that it will become a problem that has to be dealt with by you.
Through the chair, and I would assume that the situation would be the, the property owner would say, well, I don't want the city to do it, I'll do it myself. The deadline to the state, which is 2020, 2033? 37, thank you. So, if they want to sell their house in 2037, all of a sudden, the, the city and the state is saying, sorry, you can't change, you can't sell your house until your lead line has been replaced. So, it falls on, falls on the homeowner. Now, my curiosity is, if they do at that point, at this point, say, I don't want the city to do it, I will do it, does that start the clock for them? Let me back up. Does that put a requirement on the sale that the new homeowner then would have to be responsible? Or can the homeowner sell the home, and then that new owner say, well, I want the city to do it?
I, my personal interpretation of this, if that situation arose, we are required under the current statute, if a home sells and it has a lead service line, to notify the new homeowner of the lead service line status. I would just indicate in that letter, at the same time, that the previous owner had indicated they would self-perform this work within a specific time. If that's no longer their intent, please sign up for the lead service line program for the city.
Okay, so we're still gonna manage that information. We're not, the, the homeowner isn't gonna say, I'm gonna take care of it, and then we're just gonna wash our hands of it, and whatever happens with the house happens with it. We're gonna document the fact that the previous owner-
Yes, procedurally, we would, we would likely document that through our BSNA utility billing, so.
Okay, excellent.
Follow-up question on procedure. So, are all property owners automatically opted into accepting being on our list? So, they would all be within the current list of folks that are going to get their lead service line replaced? And they would have to manually contact us if they didn't want us to, to do that work?
No, I, I believe the current process is we identify, we verify the service line material and provide a notification that provides information about our program at that time. If they don't follow up and provide us with information to participate, we would follow up again more directly with them to ask them to enroll or to let us know that they're, they want to enroll in our program. More, that's more often what happens, is we have someone who just simply is non-responsive to us. So, this ordinance would now be that next step to say, you've not indicated that you wish to participate in the program, this is your other alternative, and we have to set a deadline, say, if you don't enroll by, now the date, you know, identified in here, there will be penalties.
And what is that deadline from the time that they're notified?
So, it's one year from the date of adoption of this ordinance, that they have to make the selection to either self-perform the work or enroll in our lead service line verification program.
Okay, I need, I need clarification then, because what I'm hearing is that we don't know all of the, the lead service lines in town, right? So, the, the deadline of a year isn't going to help us get to those people that don't know if they have a lead service line yet? So, once they know, let's say it's three years from now, what's the procedure from there? When they find out, are they automatically opted in to our program to get a lead service line replacement? Or do they have to manually let us know if they want to, to do their own replacement?
So, in, in that scenario, we can't, we can't manually opt people in. We can't, we can't make the determination for them. They do still have to tell us that they want to opt into the program. But this, you know, the similar rules, I, I would assume, follow, that they'll be given a reasonable amount of time to make that determination to come into compliance.
And that becomes the question, what's the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, I'm sorry. Because, I'm sorry, through, through, if I can carry on with your. So wouldn't it make more sense than to say that they have a year from the, the date that the city identifies their property as having lead service lines?
The issue with that is some people have already been identified, so they'd immediately be in non-compliance if they haven't made a determination yet.
And we do adjustment of language.
Well, the, yeah, so the.
From this date forward?
So the language, the existing language does allow for the director to make extensions. I would, I would just say that if they haven't been notified, the director has that discretion to just extend the period of time that they have to come into compliance. Or we can review if there's a better way to say it in section 22-21C. Right now, the extension, it's 365 days from the time that the ordinance is adopted to make the determination, plus additional extensions of 180 days at a time.
Yeah, through the chair, I feel like we need clarification language, but I don't know that I'm prepared to create that clarification language.
Would it be, just for the notes that I provide back to legal, would we just be looking for more discretion over the director's extension of that? Or a broader timeframe to comply in the first place?
I would think a broader timeline for compliance in the first place, again, from the, the time that they're notified that they have a lead service line to when they have to make that determination. Through the chair, Greg, I see your, your wheels churning, correct me if?
No, no, I'm, I'm completely in agreement with you. I, I'm trying to think of, you know, the language. Because I think we have to, we have to acknowledge that people have already been identified that haven't made that decision. And I think we, we need language that says, anything, you know, anyone that's been identified to this date has 180 days to, you know, respond to the city. Moving forward, any resident that's been identified by the city as having lead line service, service lines has 180 days or 360, whatever day, you know, from that date of, of notice.
So something that captures the?
The past and the future.
Yeah, the existing people.
Yeah. Because I know that I have lead service lines, but I've never been notified by the city. And I might not even be notified two or three years from now. But I can't, you know, at, at what point am I gonna receive something from the city that says, I have so many days, you know, you've notified me that I have so many days to state whether I want to opt in or opt out? I, I, there's nothing in here that says that.
I, I think hearing what you all are saying, it sounds like it takes the form of something like you have 365 days from the time you are notified, or if you've already been notified, 365 days from the adoption of this ordinance. And then extensions can be requested from there.
Adoption of the ordinance would reset the clock for everybody.
For those people, yes.
Is there a reason why it has to be 365? I mean, a year is a long time.
I, I think just because we were trying to give people enough time to schedule the work, to get quotes for it. Six months seemed a bit too short of a turnaround for someone getting notified. Plus, our clock tends to be different. The first notice we send out often gets ignored. So it may be 30 or 60 days later that they get a second notice and.
Yeah. So there is a plan, sorry, through the chair. So there is a plan to do more than just one notice. Because, you know, ADHD here, I'm gonna get the letter and, you know, nine months from now, I'm gonna go, oh, did I, did I do that? I don't remember if I did that or not.
I'm gonna make myself a note to personally.
Thank you.
Yes, I, we would want to notify people numerous times. Our goal is to get them into our lead service line replacement program. It's much more straightforward for us. We know that compliance is achieved if we're doing the work. Really hoping this is few and far between, that people take the alternative.
I wish there was a way that we could just do opt-out, you know? You're in unless you opt out, but I understand that as a.
Private property, technically.
You have no control, yeah, we can't force people.
Uh, so.
Well, you can through ordinance, can't we? Isn't this an ordinance, aren't we forced?
That would be stepping too far. So it looks like the will of the body would be that we table this for, you know, that we pull this for revision.
I could, I could make, I could make an amendment now if you want me to, or we can make that change.
What would that sound like?
So in section 22-21C, the line that reads, the replacement of the lead service line must be completed within 365 days of the effective days of this ordinance. Change to the replacement of the lead service line must be completed within the sooner of 365 days of the effective date of this ordinance or 365 days from first notification by the city.
That first part covers everybody that is?
Still allows us to grant extensions in the future.
Yeah.
And then you'd have to make the same change under C-2, exact same language, within the sooner of, within 365 days of the effective date of this ordinance or 365 days of first notification by the city.
Through the chair, how would we make that motion if we were comfortable with that?
I, you could adopt ordinance number 1295 as amended by the city manager.
Okay.
Sorry. At, at this point, Dan would usually type out exactly what he would want me to add to the. To the, yeah, to the motion.
Like I call you to tell you to replace your lead line, I gotta.
Yeah, I'm a mess.
Okay. So now we would need?
Okay, I think I, I think I might have it. Want me to take a stab? Okay. So, oh, okay, okay. I move, I move we adopt ordinance 1295 on requiring mandatory replacement of lead service lines through participation in the city's lead service line replacement program or self-replacing the line as submitted by the city manager and with the follow, following amendments. Section 22, 22-21 subsection C, mandatory replacement of lead service lines be amended to state a property owner of any dwelling, building, or structure which received water from the city's water system, which is serviced by a lead service line, is required to replace the lead service line on their property. The replacement of the lead service line must be completed with, within the soon, within the sooner of 365 days from the adoption, the effective date of this ordinance or 365 days from notification by the city. An extension of time may be granted by the city's director of public works for an additional 180 days where the owner demonstrates a good faith effort, et cetera. And then 22-21 subsection C, sub subsection 2, replacing the lead service line on their property at the property's owner expense. If a property owner selects this option, the replacement of the lead service line shall be completed within the sooner of 365 days of the effective date of this ordinance or 365 days from notification, 365 days of notification by the city. An extension of time may be granted, et cetera, et cetera.
Support.
I feel like your description was so short.
Well, I was reading.
He, he read the, yeah, he read the whole.
Larger section.
All right.
Arrow, I just gave you the sentence.
You need to be so residents can hear the context.
Got it.
Well, and, and through the chair, before we take a vote, the sooner of language, does that imply that, again, I'm, I'm thinking about those folks who have not been notified. Is it, is that implying that they would still fall under the sooner of? Or is it okay for them to, to be notified at this point?
I.
I'm making no sense.
I, frankly, at this point, I would say our notification is going to have to restart the clock once this ordinance is adopted. I wouldn't consider anyone who's been notified to this point formally notified under this ordinance. So ordinance will get adopted, the onus will be on the city to send out notifications again, saying this ordinance is now in place, this is formal notice of the requirements under that ordinance, the clock is ticking. So I do think sooner is correct in that context.
Okay.
Yeah.
So essentially, we're gonna reset the clock for everybody.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Did you get all that, Dean?
I've got video.
All right, there you go. Dean's got the video.
Okay. All right, there was a motion.
And a second.
And a second.
Johnson.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. I believe the other items on the consent are pulled for a later date, correct? Okay, all right. All right, with that being said, then we're going on to call to council, where I will turn it over to the city manager for department head updates.
PD.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm sure some of you have heard unfortunate and terrible incident involving an animal torture incident last Friday morning, a little after midnight. I just want to give you an update on the status of that puppy. His name is Max. He's doing fantastic right now. He's been released from the animal hospital. He is in the hands of a foster family. And as soon as he's healthy enough, he will be adopted out. It's just important to, to recognize, not a nosy neighbor, a, an aware neighbor who knows what's going on in their neighborhood, heard the animal crying and knew it didn't sound right. Because of that person called us, it alerted our officers. And then our officers were met with resistance. The person wasn't honest. Only by poking around and looking at the evidence and finding evidence of the, an animal that was lethargic and in pain and hurting, did they push the issue. This person ended up fleeing from the officers. After a lengthy foot chase, the officers were able to take the person into custody. So, and, and that didn't happen without some minor injuries to the officers. So everybody was moved by it, saddened by it, but also were now hopeful that, that it would have been a long life of probably pain and torture. And now this puppy's gonna find a home. So we're happy to provide that update. My thanks to that resident and to the officers who responded, who did everything right. They absolutely did a fantastic job, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the officers and the resident who reported it.
Communications.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mayor Protem, just to go back on that Bitly link real fast. So that goes to the application, I mixed that up for a second. So I intend to keep that same Bitly. And then if, for whatever reason, that file needs to change, I'll just intertwine that link. So we will continue to use that on social media.
Perfect.
Continue that.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm here to just say farewell and thank you to season three of Fern and Learn. This was a really, really great year. We had amazing, amazing students, who I would like to shout out in a second here. We met for 10 Thursdays in a row, so about two months. And they got to meet with 12 of our departments, learn more about the city. First, I would like to, real quick, rapid-fire, thank our staff. First of all, Michael Larry for organizing the dinner for every session. Colleen and James from the city manager's office. Dean, Dave, and Randy from the clerk's office. Roger, Kathy, Melissa, Brett, Liz, and Scott from CED. Jenny and Summer from DDA. Phil, Julie, Jamie, Jasmine, and Hermann from Finance. Chief Robinson and Captain Schwal from the fire team. Dan, Justin, and Emmanuel from HR. Lorena, Robert, and Marcus from Parks and Rec. Chief Emmy from Police. Jim, Charles, Callum, Rob, and Pete from DPW and Logan, R0 Waste Manager. All those staff members took time out of their super busy schedules to meet the students, and it was awesome. So great job to staff. And now I want to thank our students. Andy Popovic, Andreas Kemper, Brian Rose, Chris Hall, Chris Woodside, Jerry and Joanna Pruden, Jim McGlucky, Catherine Eliwitz, Margaret Donnelly, Melinda Couples, Molly Elliott, and Sarah Van Warmer. They were a very unique group. Catherine and Margaret are actually from Hazel Park. They wanted to learn more about the Ferndale community and figure out how they could bring a similar program like this to Hazel Park. And then Joanna and Andy are returning students. And Andy reached out to Colleen and I to see if she could take this to SEMCOG, to take it on a regional level. So I told both, you know, parties, I'm happy to help however I can and spread the word and talk about how we did it. So staff and students alike should be very proud of themselves, and I'm really grateful. This is my first year running it by myself. I've done it for the last three years, but I was nervous to take the reins, and it was amazing. So thank you all so, so much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks Riley. And just to add to the Fern and Learn, congratulations to all the graduates. But something that I heard that night when they graduated is that Fern and Learn students would like to learn more about, you heard about all the other departments that they heard from and learned from, they'd like to learn more about council, so that may be something in the future. I thought it was very interesting. Among many other things that they wanted to learn more about. All right. City manager.
Parks.
All right, I want to give kudos to Riley because she did an amazing job with the Fern and Learn. So yeah, so Parks and Recreation, our summer camp starts next Monday, so we'll be in the full swing of things with that. We also have this Thursday, our movie pajama night at the Detroit Curling Club at 6:00 PM. We have activities, bounce houses, and a bunch of games and different things from 6:00 to 7:00. And then we'll be showing Ninja Turtle, Mutant Ninja Turtles, Mutant Mayhem movie at 7:00 PM. Feel free to bring your blankets, your chairs, your snacks. We will have free popcorn from Motor City Popcorn at the event as well. And again, that will be inside, so you can wear your pajamas and come hang out with us next, this Thursday. Also, we had Geary Skate Jam last Saturday, it was a huge success. I want to give a special shout out to and thanks to IEP Urgent Care for being our premier sponsor for that event. I also want to give kudos for Les Sanford for being a sponsor as well. And all of our vendors, we had youth vendors there this year who were selling all their trinkets and lemonade and 3D printed toys. And it was really cute and amazing, and they did a great job. Lastly, I just want to remind all of our dog lovers and people that have pets, when you come to our parks, please keep your dog on a leash. If you would like to take your dog off the leash, we do have a dog park at Wilson Park. If you would like a membership, you can contact us and we can walk you through that process. But it is city policy in the ordinance that your dog must be on a leash in our parks. Thank you.
And then last, we have a DPW.
So I just want to announce that the sewer improvement program began last week. They're prepping, cleaning, doing televising in some of the segments, first phase. There's small segments on Chevelle and Coy, Martin Road, Hazelhurst, off of Allen, Marshall by the Southwest yard. And then there's one big section. It is, again, a 33-inch behind Woodland and Maplehurst between Bermuda and Woodward. And we are doing a neighborhood town hall to answer questions in the area tomorrow. We'll be set up in the alley off of Bermuda from 5:00 to 7:00 to talk to residents. We included that date with the general construction notice that, that we hand-delivered a couple of weeks ago. That's it.
And did? No, no objection from the clerk's.
Okay, all right. All right, then, where did I start last time? Did I start to the right last time? Councilmember Polika.
I have one thing.
I have one thing. So Sunday, June 29th, there will be a Ferndale Pride Golf Scramble. It will be held at Maple Lane Golf Club, 18-hole shotgun start golf tournament. There'll be a ball scramble with classic games like the longest drive, closest to the pin, and the biggest hole. It includes a deli box lunch. It also has a 19th hole party at the clubhouse with dinner provided, tin-can style raffle, 50/50 raffle drawing prizes for the golf winners, door prizes, and more, sponsored by Suburban Ford of Ferndale. Tickets are $130 per golfer. And you can find out more information on Facebook under Ferndale Pride, and also on the ferndalepride.com website under events.
Councilmember Johnson.
Nothing from me.
Mayor Protem Mikulski.
Just one item tonight. I wanted to remind folks at home about the summer food service program known nationally as Meet Up and Eat Up. It's a great program now that kids are out of school and we have some food insecure individuals within the community. Basically, the thing to know is that in Ferndale, meals are served Monday through Thursday. There are some meals at Ferndale Lower Elementary, Ferndale High, University High, and even at the Detroit Curling Club. Service runs approximately from mid-June through early August. And if you need to find a site, you can text FOOD, F-O-O-D, to 304304.
Councilmember Kelly.
I have nothing.
All right. And I will just give a congratulatory shout-out to all of the graduates, 2025 graduates from Ferndale High School, University High School, and TCEC, also known as Tri-County Education Center. All the graduations went off beautifully, including the one that included my son. So, which was great. And it's really inspirational, because if you think about it, we just graduated new voters, new leaders in the community. And I just think it's just amazing how we get new voters and new leaders in the community every single year. And I think that's just something to celebrate because of the way the political climate has changed. It's important for these individuals to feel like they have a voice. So I was very impressed to know, to learn where these individuals are going as far as their career choices, their aspirations. So that was pretty great. I do also want to state that this Friday, if I'm not mistaken, June 13th, Hazel Park is having their Juneteenth celebration, I believe at 12:30 at city, at their city hall. And then on Monday, June 16th, and I know it's the wrong day, folks. It was unavoidable, and I want to be there to celebrate with you because I have another commitment later on in the week. But here at city hall, we'll be having our celebration at, I believe it is at 6 o'clock, where's Michael?
5:30.
5:30, okay. 5:30 here at city hall. And we'll have speakers from Ferndale Public Schools, as well as, I believe, I read somewhere that our Wind Ensemble is presenting as well. So that'd be great from the high school. So with that being said, I hope to see you all Monday. And, but this meeting is adjourned at 8:35 PM. Thank you.